Meeting of the school board. And we only have one item on our agenda. We're going to do post referendum planning. So Jill, I'm going to turn it over to you if you want to.
Mark, could you get the side TVs to check on? Thanks.
And then we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Oh, hey, we're back in business. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Everyone want to join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'd like to call the special meeting to order. Nora, will you do a roll call, please?
Taylor?
Here.
Aubrey?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Paige?
Here.
Roseanne?
Here.
Marlo?
Present.
Had to change it up.
Yeah, had to be different. Well, there's only one item on our agenda. It's the post referendum planning, like I said. And just to be clear, tonight, this is just for information and discussion only. Next week, we're planning to have a, two meetings, potentially. One would be an opportunity for the public to give us input. It'd be a listening session for the board. And then a second meeting would either be next week or it'd be at our regular board meeting on the 11th, which is the following Monday. And at that point, we would be having further discussion, more input, and then making a decision on what our action plan will be. At the end of the meeting tonight, I'm going to confer with the board members and we're going to set the dates. So if you hang out for a few minutes, you can find out the dates of our meetings next week. We haven't set those dates yet.
And just to clarify, Peter, when you use the word discussion, who's in the discussion?
Yeah, it's a good point. Thanks, Jill. It's just board members and administrative team. So, you know, I'm really happy everyone's here tonight, but, you know, tonight's not a night for public input. Again, we'll have that at a listening session. So this is just a meeting for the, you know, just for input from the board and from the administrative team. So all that being said, Jill, you want to take it away with a presentation on some planning ideas?
Yeah. So first off, I thought it was important to circle back to remembering what our deficit is if the referendum were to not pass. So this is just showing us our cumulative deficit. And you can see going into the 24, 25 school year at the very, very bottom here in the dark red, you can see that it's approximately 4.8, closer to 5 million in regard to what our deficit is going into next school year. So with the referendum not passing, we have to balance our budget, right? So we have no choice in that. We do have to bring our budget down by approximately $5 million for the 24, 25 school year. So the, the plan that has been shared with the community in regard to how we would adjust our budget for the 24, 25 school year is that we would need to close one of our elementary schools. We'd have to change our grade configuration, reduce staffing by 35 to 40 employees, increase extracurricular fees, increase fees to community groups and/or reduce their usage of our buildings, and then reduce the number of days within the school year. I do want to preface that that last one was tended to not be discussed with the referendum because it was something, if you recall as a board, that we discussed and thought is something we probably should be doing, whether the referendum passed or did not pass. So that was not something that was really discussed as much throughout the referendum because we didn't want people to be confused that that would be something we only do if the referendum were to not pass. So we, our admin team in the last week and a half have been really working to re-solidify our numbers if we were to have to reduce our budget by 5 million. This is what we're coming up with so far in relation to our budget. So the reduction in school days would be approximately $1.2 million. Now, please be careful to take these numbers as exact values because what's really important to be mindful of is it's like a moving target per day. Depending on which staff members potentially retire or that are having to be non-renewed, depending on what their salaries are, really changes what the scope is for staff reductions, which also therefore changes other numbers throughout our budget. So just be mindful that right now, these are approximate numbers, but we're also really fairly confident in these numbers as well. Board members, as soon as the presentation is over, I will share this entire presentation with you so that you don't necessarily need to take notes. So the reduction in the school year, it could be up to $1.2 million. Reduction in capital projects, normally our budget is around $500,000 per year for capital improvement projects. It has been sitting at closer to $250,000 the last two years because of the financial deficit that we've been in. So moving into next year, we would also have to bring that back down to a reduction of $250,000. So just remember that means we're having to defer maintenance projects and things like that across the district. But we already have our team working on what that looks like as well. No FFNE, so that's furniture fixtures, equipment. Our budget right now for the entire school district for the last two years has been $50,000. So we would just not be able to do any furniture fixtures or equipment into the next year. An increase in extracurricular fees will yield around $250,000. Right now, it costs students $75 per year to participate in high school athletics for the whole season. So if I was in three different sports, I pay $75 annually. We would be increasing it to $125 per season and then up to $200 for those that play football. So an increase in fees across the board, and we can go over those in more detail at another time with the board, just to re-remind yourselves on what those fees were. This would increase fees for the middle school, for all of our clubs, all of our fine arts programs, and all of our athletics. So pretty much any extracurricular activity that happens outside of school would have that addition of fees, which therefore is really more of a revenue, but helps us with our budget, right? Then when it comes to building and director budgets, we are going with zero-based budgeting and we will have to reduce our building and director budgets by at least $250,000. And then our staff reductions of that 35 to 40 employees will be about $2.9 million. So that brings us right now to 4.9 million in reductions. It's been a lot of work, right, admin team? When it comes to our grade configuration in a conversation, you know, that we've been having is that the emphasis was that we were going to be shifting our 7, 8 students up to the high school. I've talked to some of the board members already and all of our administrative team, and it is the only thing that our community is desperately asking us to reexamine and look at. So our team has done that and reexamined this proposal of shifting 7 and 8 graders to the high school. So we do have two other proposals and one of them being what we would suggest from the administrative team, and that's what I'd like to go over now. So what we could do is close, we have to close an elementary school, right? It's what we have to do. So the choices that we would suggest is either the closure of Dyer or the closure of Lyons. Initially, the closure of Dyer is what we came up with way back in September. And at that time, we did not forecast the ability to have four grade levels at the middle school after reexamining it and trying to really reevaluate what that looks like. We do think that if we were to close Dyer, then we can have pre-K through 3rd grade. We could have 4 through 7 at the middle school and then 8 through 12 at the high school. I have maps of this so that we can walk through what that looks like with that as one of our choices. The other choice is closing Lyons. And that would be turning our elementaries into pre-K through 4th grade and then the middle school being a 5'8" and then the high school being a 9'12". Okay, any questions yet? So our team also went through pros and cons of the building closures. People, you could probably come up with other pros and cons on the list, so this is not an exhaustive list, but things that we were thinking about when it comes to pros and cons of both. So if we were to close Lyons Elementary School, pros to that is that it is a smaller building, so it does give us more flexibility, right, over time. A concern of mine is that we do have, A, where there's going to be a housing development there, and on 83, there's a development. So by reducing one of our buildings, we are really taking away a lot of square footage for the school district. So it would be more opportunity for us if we were to close a smaller school. Lyons has nine classrooms. That's the size of Lyons. That's there on bullet number three. So that speaks to the less flexibility. So those are pros as to why that building would be a good suggestion. There's also no room for related services. So that means OTPT, speech, those kind of things. The building is fairly tight. When it comes to our 2018 Capitol referendum, the office space at Lyons is the only thing that was renovated there. So it's, it's the one that had the least amount of additional renovations from the 2018 Capitol referendum. It's the only building in Walworth County. Sometimes that gets a little bit tricky for us because with it being in Walworth, sometimes depending on the services students have and/or if something happens where we need to contact police, we can't use necessarily our SRO because it's not in Racine County. So it sometimes can get a little bit tricky to have a building that's not in the same county as our other, other, other buildings are. We do believe this would be a better grade configuration long-term for the school district as I don't believe we'll be able to reopen a building for a fairly long time. So this would give us the best grade configuration moving forward. Least amount of impact for the school district, so the, there's the least amount of student shifts with this model. And then it's also the best scenario for Thomas Bus. Board members, I did put a piece of paper down in front of you. This was the note from Liz. Always fun to have a conversation with Liz because when I first go and talk to her, you know, she needs time to think about her ideas, but then it's amazing what she comes up with and it's like, pff, like, so kudos to Liz on a lot of what she said. But it's interesting because when I had a conversation with her, I did not tell her our grade configuration ideas and I also did not tell her which building. I was more so wanting feedback from Thomas Bus in regard to what would they foresee as needs that we have to pay attention to when it comes to the closure of a building and what could cost us more money, but what could also be more efficient, right, with the bus company? And it's interesting because after I left, she emailed me the following day, and this is her email. So she had suggested if we moved 5th grade to Waller, Dyer, Winkler, and Lyons and we, and we kept Karcher on a same time schedule as BHS, but then, sorry, then we closed Lyons and moved Lyons students. She's suggesting where neighborhood kids could go. So it's interesting that Thomas Bus would also prefer us to make that adjustment of shifting 5th grade. This has to do with our double bus runs. So the more double bus runs we have within the district, the more cost-effective it is for Thomas Bus. And what I mean by that is let's say we have five buses that take elementary students or, no, it's high school in the morning first, right? So secondary students get picked up first. And if we have about the same number of secondary students that get picked up and then they have to go back around and pick up elementary students, and if there's five buses first and then they circle back to another five buses, that's optimal, right? And that's called a double bus run. If we have too many students in one run at a time, then they need, say, you know, eight buses on the first run, but only four buses on the second run. And it costs the district more money to do a situation like that. So the more balanced we can be, the better. And a configuration with the closing of Lyons does really balance that for Thomas Bus. There is potential loss of enrollment. I'll kind of cover that in just a little bit in relation to thoughts on that and our analysis on that as well. And then also the loss of the property, right? Lyons does have a nice property out there and quite a bit of acreage. If we were to close Dyer, the pros of doing that would be potential savings on maintenance. It is a bigger building than Lyons is. It has city land, which potentially could be considered more valuable if we were to sell it over time. Cons of it is we are shifting more students. There's a fair amount more remodeling that has happened with the 2018 Capitol referendum that has happened at Dyer. Students at Dyer and Cooper have shifted already three different times in the last couple of years. So that would be additional shifts to the same group of students and families. It is a bigger building, so that's a con of closing, right? So a pro of keeping as part of our system. We also redid the stage as part of the Capitol referendum and it does have some new playground equipment. We did, I want to share, analyze, looking at the potential of closing Cooper, Waller, or Winkler as well. Winkler is a similar situation to Lyons, but is not as optimal in regard to its proximity to other school districts. So that concerns us if we were to do that. Feel it could be more of a similar Dover situation if we were to close Winkler. Waller is not optimal to be able to fit students across the district and Cooper was not either. Cooper keeps, if we were to do that, Cooper keeps, some of our schools still is one-section schools. And to us, we are trying to make lemonade out of lemons, right? So are there things we can fix within the district to make them better as a system? So that's what we are also trying to do. Yes, it's unfortunate that we have to close one of our schools, but how do we make it the best possible situation for all of our families and staff and kiddos in the district? So these are the two buildings that I'll continue to go over in regard to suggestions for closure. So let's first look at the closure of Dyer. So if we were to close Dyer, our team, now it's probably kind of going to be hard to see a little bit. If we were to close Dyer, what it does to Waller, it's probably more important to look at what's at the very top. It says at Waller, we would have all 4K in the whole school district. So there's been, we have a lot of services for 4K and EC. EC is early childhood. So that's three-year-old students with special needs that are part of the school district as well. So there's a lot of services and manpower needed for 4K and EC. And when we have it spread out across the whole school district, we're not nearly as efficient. So if we were to put all of our 4K and EC in one location, it really helps us become a lot more efficient. You'll also notice that both of our, whether we close Lyons or Dyer, this is suggested. It's just in a different building, but we are in both of them suggesting to keep 4K all together in one building. Then also, Waller would have self-contained. That's what the SC stands for. Self-contained is our special education students who need to have some of their day where they're not in a regular classroom. So that would be all of our elementary students would be at one school. That would relate to needing some self-contained environment time. And then also at Waller would be 5K through 3rd grade, and those would be two sections each of 5K, 5K 1st grade, 2nd grade, and 3rd grade. It also still has art and music in here. This is all the self-contained EC here. Special ed needs are here. This is the office area. This is our kitchen area and maintenance. This is the gym, cafeteria. And then over here is 5K and then these would be our 4K sections here. So that's what we would suggest as the grade configuration for Waller. For Lyons would be a 5K through 3, but it would be a two-section school instead of a one-section school. It's one section right now, 4K through 5th grade. So this would become a 5K through 3rd grade, two-section school. So you can see here, here's two 5th grade classroom, or I'm sorry, 5K, 1st grade, 2nd grade, 3rd grade layout there. Music and art here, and this is the library. All of these little baby rooms are either toilets and/or where we would have to have interventions and things like that. Then at Winkler, Winkler is very similar in size to Lyons, but it has 10 classrooms instead of nine, so it's just slightly bigger than Lyons's. So it, it does allow for that music and art to not have to share a room. That's really the difference there. But it too becomes a two-section school out at Winkler. Cooper Montessori is the building that would then also have to house Wisco. So Wisco is our charter school. I also think it's really important to emphasize, I've gotten some emails in relation to Montessori, and why don't we just get rid of Montessori as something that quite a few people have reached out to me about. I think it's really important to know, and Ruth, thank you, Ruth, for doing a study on this in relation to how much money do we make with Montessori? So after all of our staffing is paid for, we make over a million dollars on our Montessori program. So it is our biggest revenue generator outside of traditional school. So it would not be a good idea to not have Montessori in the district because it is a fairly big money generator for us. So again, draws in over a million dollars after all the staff have been paid. So that's a benefit to the school district to keep that program. So part of why we shifted Montessori to Cooper in the first place last year was to ensure that we have the ability to grow Montessori because it is a spot where we can generate revenue. We want to ensure that we have that ability. By keeping it at Cooper, we have the, the potential of growing it from more 4K, 5K sections, 1 through 3, 4, 5, 6, but also the potential of a 7, 8. That's a desire from some families in the community. A lot of people, when they're seeking Montessori, are wanting it to be 3K actually through 8th grade. Right now, ours is 4K through 6th grade. But by having it there, we do have the ability to draw in more open enrollments to, to the Montessori program, especially in the deficit model that we're in. We are going to need to come up with additional ways to, to seek revenue. But Wisco, if you recall, is also, it's our new charter school that we have in district and just started it this year in September. And after all staff is paid, it is generating over $250,000 for the school district. So that too is a moneymaker so far for us and a program that is pretty awesome. That it's just, we just started it in September and it's already really drawing quite a bit of revenue for us as a system. So also needing to ensure we do a good job of taking care of that program too. So those two programs would live together over at Cooper. And then Karcher, this is going to be really impossible to see. But Cooper, I meant Karcher School, if we were to go with closure of Dyer would be a 4, 4 through 7 building. We could fit. It's real tight, but we can fit if we have seven sections per grade level. Right now, we are predicting that, right, we do live in a model right now pretty much across the school district where we're running eight sections across the district. We would have to drop down to six sections, sometimes seven, only to keep our class sizes not in the 35 range. So for the most part, we're going from eight sections to six across the district. This model here does allow us to potentially be able to have seven sections of four grade levels at the middle school. It is not designed for three-grade level, four-grade levels. It was designed for three-grade levels. However, it's really probably more of an argument of do you crowd the middle school a little bit or do you crowd the high school? So neither one are necessarily optimal, but keeping middle school grade kids together is probably a good idea. Then we would be shifting our 8th graders to the high school in this model. And they could fit at the high school. 7th and 8th grade technically could fit at the high school as well. It's making one, it's, one of the buildings is, is just a little bit tight and it's just kind of a which one makes more sense to be tight. So that's if we closed Dyer. The closure of Lyons is going to be the administrative recommendation to the board. So this is, this is the one that we would suggest as an admin team that we go with. Everyone did such a great job on our admin team trying to come up with it because after all of the emails and phone calls that we got in relation to shifting kids to the high school, we do believe that, yes, that is the model we thought was what we should do. But after all of the comments we've gotten, we think that we would lose more open enrollments doing that model than if we were to try to squeeze more kids into the middle school. So this will be our, our recommendation to the board is the closure of Lyons. So with the closure of Lyons, what we would do is we would turn Dyer into where all 4K students would be. So again, notice that we're trying to keep 4K and EC together. So all 4K and EC would be at Dyer. It is a great location for this. Right here is where 4K would live. These were the classrooms that got remodeled and are a little bit bigger. It's perfect for 4K as they really need those playbase centers within the school as well. It also is super important to have an environment for all of your 4K kiddos that is really attractive. They're our first students into our system and once you tend to get them, you don't lose them. So it, you know, we have to start thinking of how do you retain and attract families to BASD? So really trying to put them in a spot where we feel like it could be a really great location. This is, this is it. Then you can see here, this is where EC would be. So that early childhood here, OTPT, 5K classrooms here, and then 1st grade, 2nd grade, 3rd grade, and then downstairs would be 4th grade. There's three sections right now here. So 4th and 3rd grade are kind of bigger classes than kindergarten through 2nd grade. So right now, we're, we're needing three sections of 4th and 3rd, which would be seven sections, but everywhere else is three sections. I meant six sections. So that's that difference to try to keep our class sizes kind of not out of control, but yes, they are going up no matter what. And then we also have music here, art here. This is the gym, cafeteria. So maintenance is down here. We're having to use all the little, little nooks and crannies spaces in order to have intervention, special ed, you know, those kind of things. But, but there is room here because once that 3rd grade and 4th grade section goes through, that should open up two classrooms. So that does help us a little bit when we think about future planning. Then when you look at Wall, and then that will also have 5K through 4th grade at Dyer. When you look at Waller, Waller would have the district's self-contained section still. It is where self-contained is right now. So self-contained sections here in this section of the school. And then Waller would also have 5K through 4th grade. So you can see 5K, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and this is 4th here. Art, music, and then there's all these little, like I can't even believe we're using this little room, 218. It's real tiny there, but we would have to use all those little spaces for all of the related services that are needed for kids. And then Winkler would be a two-section school, two sections of 5K, two sections of 1st grade, two of 3rd, two of, I'm sorry, two of 2nd. Two sections of 5K, two sections of first grade, two of third, two of, I'm sorry, two of second, two of third, two of fourth. Music and art would have to be in the cafeteria. This, it has been something that we've done before historically. Sometimes even Joel shared with me that music was in the library sometimes, right? So that could be a possibility. This is the library here. And then there, these little baby rooms here all over that are real small would also have to be used for interventions and things like that. And then Cooper stays the same in either model where it houses Montessori and Wisco, so our charter school. And then Karcher here, this is where the biggest savings when it comes to Karcher, which we knew we were gonna have to do no matter what if the referendum did not pass, is to remove the house model from the middle school. So it is, it's a reduction. It really helps us with staffing. It's unfortunate is it's a model I firmly believe in. However, financially, it's not something we can afford to continue to do. So it is something we have to take away. But it, it is causing staff to have to teach more sections during the day. But I've talked to Nick about this as well, principal at Karcher. We're fairly confident, he and I are coming up with some ideas of how we still think we could have some team time ability in the schedule to try to figure that out. So I've been talking through that, but it really is using all of the school. We also talked through one potential, if Karcher starts to get a little too tight, which it's the building that would get the tightest. If it, if it does, something we could do, which would be super unfortunate because we just built it in 2021, is that there's this room here, for example, 241 with 242. It's a smaller classroom in the back for special ed or intervention. And then there's a glass classroom here in the front, more of like a breakout space. You could combine those two spaces together and like remove a wall in there and that could become another classroom if we needed. So there are some options over time if we were needing to find some additional classrooms at the middle school. And this would cause Karcher to become a 5'8" and it would leave VHS as a 912. Something else our team wanted to study was in relation to not wanting to make the same mistake as we did as a district. This was before, I think everybody's time on the board. Like nobody on the board was, okay. So Taylor.
I voted no.
That's good.
Someone looked that up.
On record.
Well, hey, there's always tough decisions all the time.
Probably on microfiche that we'd have to look that one up. I'll trust you, Taylor, that it would know.
Always tough decisions to have to be made, you know, and it's nobody's fault, right? The board was trying to do the best thing that they could at that time with the information they had. So there's no blame at all. It's just wanting to really think about, we studied, and oh, I didn't put it on the slide actually. I apologize for this. We studied Dover in the proximity of other schools to Dover School because we had Dover Elementary out by Eagle Lake. And there's a section of our community that lives, it's section 25 on our map, that has 62 open enrollment outs within that one section. And we do think that it's because we closed Dover Elementary. Dover was five minutes from that community. And Kansasville is six minutes from that community. Brighton is 11. And our own elementary schools are 17 to 19 minutes. So the closest Burlington School to Eagle Lake is 17 to 19 minutes. So that made us think, okay, if we were to close Lyons, do we think that would happen again? Our answer to that is no, and this is why. Okay? So one is Lyons to Dyer is seven minutes. Okay? Lyons to Dyer is seven minutes. Lyons to Winkler is 10 minutes. Then hopefully you could follow me here, okay? Lyons to, so if you live in Lyons, okay? And you're gonna drive to Elkhorn, it would be 17 minutes. That's farther than any of our schools. If you are Eastview, which is a seven, four, five building, sorry, fourth and fifth grade building in Lake Geneva, it's 12 minutes, which is farther than our schools. Central Dennison in, in Lake Geneva is 13 minutes. And then Wheatland is 13 minutes. So all of them are quite a bit farther than our seven minutes to Dyer. If you live in Honey Creek, which students right now are currently attending Lyons and it take, it, with the students that are in, living in Honey Creek, going to Lyons, it takes them 15 minutes to get to Lyons. If we were to shift those students to Dyer, it would be 11 minutes. So it's a shorter commute to come into Ly, to Dyer than traveling out to Lyons. If they were to go to East Troy, it's 11 minutes. And if they were to go to Waterford, it's nine minutes. So this could be a little bit of a, a gamble there. But we feel fairly confident in this because these students currently are not open enrolling outs and their drive to Lyons is 15 minutes. In Honey Lake, if you live in that area, Lyons students who are currently attending, it takes them 12 minutes to get out to Lyons. Dyer would be eight. So it's closer to come into town. Waterford closest school would be 12 minutes. If you live out by Paradise Drive, which we have students attending currently at Lyons, it takes them about 12 minutes to get to Lyons. To get to Dyer would be 11 minutes. If they were to go to East Troy, it's 15, Waterford 16, Elkhorn 18. So we do feel like this is not similar to Dover in the sense of Dover School has Kansasville six minutes away and Brighton 11, where our closest school is 17 minutes. So our schools are still closer than going to a different school district. Also, I think what's important to know is Joel is our wizard over here on open enrollment. So I appreciate that, Joel. And did a great job really trying to guesstimate and estimate potential open enrollments we could lose. If we had to make a guesstimate, we think it could be around 10 if we close Lyons.
Joel, do you have something to add? It looks like.
You gotta be on the mic.
We have to get to the mic because always people won't help. Nora, do you have a mic for Joel?
Right here.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Got to turn it on, I think.
I was just gonna add, like when we did our re, re-boundary of the elementary about four or five years ago, if you remembered, I think his name was Mark Rolfer's came in and did the study. 60% of Honey Lake students were actually attending Cooper at the time. So they were school choicing to Cooper at that point and not attending Lyons. So that's one thing as we went through this data, we kind of went back to and, and tried to look at again is, okay, 60% of Honey Lake was actually originally actually attending Cooper when Cooper was a 4K through fifth, or fourth, 4K through five building. So those students all came back because we got rid of school choice, inner, in district transfers of school choice. So that added into some of that conversation that we had up there.
Yeah, so the Honey Lake students used to go to a city school. They would be returning to a city school. That's what Joel's mentioning. The other thing that I checked in with, with Thomas Bus is how many of our Lyons students ride the bus? Because if you were to open enroll, then you have to drive your family or your kids to another school district. If this, the, the number of bus riders, there is noted on the bottom. We, at Lyons, we have 148 students that ride the bus and a total of 162 students attend Lyons. So that is pretty much every student almost, minus 14, that don't ride the bus. So pretty much all students at Lyons ride the bus. Therefore, that makes us confident that they would still need to ride the bus and would come into one of our city schools and attend school with us. I don't think our team would be suj, look at my little thing jumping there on the bottom. It's kind of driving me crazy. Do you see that?
You have eight of.
Eight messages?
Eight messages.
Yeah, stop texting me, everybody. Um, I apologize. Um, so, sorry. So when talking to Liz, a concern I had is if we have 162 students that go to Lyons and let's say only 20 of them or something like that was riding the bus, that would be concerning because then parents, parents are driving their students and would have more ability or more, they'd be more apt to potentially open enroll to another district, right? So this builds our confidence that thinking that this, this could be okay. Does that make sense? So our administrative recommendation to the board would be to close Lyons Ele, Lyons Center Elementary and then have grade configurations where Dyer would have 5K through fourth grade, all of 4K and all of our EC, early childhood. Waller would be 5K through fourth grade with self-contained. Winkler would be 5K through fourth grade. Cooper would be 4K through sixth grade Montessori with that ability to grow and potentially become a K8. What I do think's important about this, that I want to give a caveat on, is with the shift of, if the board decides to go with a 5'8" model at the middle school, being able to have Cooper Montessori grow to become a 4K through eight program is going to help the population number at Karcher. So it's a win-win if we were to grow the Montessori program through seven, eight. I will say that we are not ready to do that come the 24, 25 school year, but it would be something for us to be able to look into for the following school year. But I do think that's important to note, that helps us with this model. Now, I think what's also important is that, it does bother me that I have shared with the community that numerous times that we would be going to a 712 model. Back in August, that was the best decision we could come up with at that time. As you progress forward and even being a new superintendent in the role from July till now, the amount of people I've talked to in the community has woefully changed a lot of my perspective on a lot of things. A really great idea brought up to me multiple times by multiple different people was, hey, you know, you might not want to shift more kids up to the high school because you have people that are wanting to do in addition to the high school, right? For more fitness center or something like that, wrestling room, right? We hear that a lot. If you, why not? If you don't shift your kids up to the high school, you can renovate sections of your high school over time and save you a lot of money because you do have a little bit of give there. One example was given, and the problem with saying stuff like this is people quote me then and then it becomes what we do. So I'm just giving a hypothetical, okay? A hypothetical idea was you could shift all of the math teachers out of the math wing and remove all of those classrooms and walls and that could become another fitness area and/or a wrestling area. You could, there's, there's other really great ideas that have been brought forward that are all hypothetical. But really good points that I think make me, have made me think differently in relation to some of what we should do and could do for the school district as we try to think visionary moving forward. So I think that's just also just important things to be thinking about as a board. Yeah. So I do just want to circle back to the budget reductions, right? So this, these last two slides here, I'm gonna show you are kind of the synopsis. Some of you have asked me for a summary, right? That helps you with, okay, so, so wait a minute, what are we saying? So actually, these last three slides are kind of your summary, right? This is our suggested grade configuration, what building we would suggest closing. This is letting you know where we're at with our budget and how close we're getting. And we will go into closed session here about the staff reductions in just a little bit. But you can see all of the, the numbers that kind of correspond to all of the reductions to get us to that, close to that $5 million. And then, so our recommendation here would be to close Lyons, change our grade configuration to 4K through four, five through eight, and nine through 12. Reduce our staff by 35 to 40 employees. Increase those extracurricular fees, increase fees to the community groups and/or reduce our building usage. And then also look at reducing the number of days. After our staff get through all of our staffing reductions, the next thing we're tackling and looking at again is that reduction in days to the school year. So that would be my summary. Anything else any administrators want to add that you feel like I didn't say? Did a good job, Annie. Thanks, Annie.
Anyone on the board have any questions or comments at this point? Again, we're not making a decision tonight, so we're gonna have all, we're gonna have time to receive community input and also think about this because this is a very difficult decision. And we're trying to, I think, select the best of less than optimal options. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
You said I'm sad we have to do it. I was gone from the day after the recom, the referendum until the following Monday. And so I missed out on all, a lot of the phone calls and things that probably would have made me feel maybe a little better that I could come home and see how, you know, how bad it is.
Yeah, clearly the tax impact was too high, right? So Ruth and I have had conversations about that too. And reducing our budget by $5 million will substantially decrease the tax impact the next time we need to ask for an operational referendum. We've already been looking at projections on what that potentially is. So bringing, when you're decreasing $5 million of a $46 million budget, it does dramatically change the tax impact next time.
Do you mind going back to the slide with the, that slide? Thank you. I just want people to know too that I think there's six categories of reductions in here to get us close to 5 million. The administrative team and the board looked at dozens of different things. This is what was distilled down. The other choices that we looked at were pretty awful. You know, this was kind of the best of the worst options. None of the, none of these are things that we necessarily wanted to do. Some I think we'd maybe consider in reduction in school days, but the, the rest of them obviously aren't things that are not good for the school district. But just so people know, this wasn't, we spent hours in multiple meetings going over every possible budget reduction we could think of. And it was hard work, but this was the best plan we could come up with. One thing I want to mention too, in increasing extracurricular fees that was brought up, it's a quarter million dollars. We are gonna be sensitive to kids who can't afford to participate. They would be scholarshiped or we'll figure out how to make it. We're not gonna, we're gonna really work hard not to keep kids from having opportunities to be in extracurriculars. That's a critical part of school.
And the, the increase is not really out of the norm from what other school districts are doing. You know, it's so, I think that's important to know too.
Can I make one other comment too? On, when you go to the pros and cons list, talking about, because this may be come up for, for questions later. In both categories, we're talking about whether to sell the school. I think that's something we'd have to consider carefully too. There's a good chance the district could hang on to either school and maybe you look to lease it out to a, a third party and you hang on to it. Or we look for it as potentially, if it's a revenue source where we could sell it for a, a lot of money, that's another option. I want to make clear that's not necessarily something the district would do immediately. Like we wouldn't turn around and sell the land.
I think someone had shared with me, I didn't know this, that Lyons was not used for a little while and turned into a community center. Didn't we sit, talk about that?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yeah. So there's a little while where we were renting it out and then reused it again. So there's potential in those kind of avenues.
And this is different than Dover because we never owned the land. We never owned the building, we just leased it. So we closed it, we didn't have anything to sell, but it would be another asset the district would have. Unfortunately, we have to close one of these schools, but we'll, I don't know. I guess it's to be determined what would happen. I don't know, I guess it's to be determined what would happen with the building and the land. Anybody else have any questions or comments for now? I mean, we'll, we'll have time again for more later as we digest this and think about.
I would just like to say thank you to Jill and the admin team um for really taking a look at this again and trying to um. Give us the best way forward. We kind of drew our line in the sand with the referendum, but um being able to come back and reassess and still hold true to, you know. What we said we would have to do, but being able to, to pivot and make it as least painful as possible. And then as far as the extracurricular um fees, our community is a very generous community. So I too don't foresee us having an issue with being able to scholarship um necessary students.
Yeah, thanks, Marle.
Thank you, Marle.
I wrote down a lot of questions, but they're really detail, detailed questions, so they might be, you know, figures you don't have right now. So just. In looking at the reasoning between the choices that you gave, I just had a few details questions. So for example, I'm wondering what percentage of our special ed services are in four K? Because I know that that's. You were talking about it being more efficient to put it all together um with the EC program. I'm wondering if that um saves the district as well or maybe saves some. As a speech therapist who's worked at multiple schools at once, I know it can be a real challenge with scheduling and everything. So I'm wondering if you did um some looking at staffing that building. You were saying it's more efficient, is it also cost-saving, I guess is my question.
Chris, do you want to be able to answer that, you think?
Thank you.
Chris is our director of people services.
As we work through.
Is the mic on?
Yes, it is.
Maybe get real, real close.
As we work through um exactly where students um will be shifting in the schools, we'll be able to better have an idea of the exact numbers and, and some of those pieces. But yes, it is some of the travel costs that comes with that. Having it all in one hallway like, like we have it listed at Dyer does allow us to situate our related services and our EC and special education teachers. More centrally to where, where the kids are instead of having grades downstairs. And it, it made sense for us to have, again, just one hallway where our teachers and our staff and our kids are all in one space.
That was, I think, the Lyons closing scenario, right? And that's at Dyer and in the, well, in the other scenario, they were together at Waller and, and the self-contained was also all in the same building. So I guess my question there, that's even more special ed consolidation. So the costs, I don't know how much travel cost is part of the special ed budget specifically. But so I'm, I'm wondering about the efficiency there when we're looking at both options.
And that's something that we can provide a little bit more information on. Our self-contained program is at Waller. We have a, we have a nice setup there with how that's situated. With the situation at Dyer, our sensory room and some of the, the therapy rooms would all be. In very close proximity to where those students are. So it's, it's a short trip for all kids involved there. The self-contained program is set up um already in that building and has all resources, again, centrally located around it. So we would still have services at Waller where some of the therapies would still have space there.
Do you have, we don't have as much overlap between the services of four K EC and the self-contained.
We do, we, we, we would still.
But not as much as.
Not as much, no.
So the impact of having them in the same building versus not is not as big as.
Correct.
So either of these is still much more efficient, I guess, is the bottom line.
A lot more efficient than what we're doing right now.
Great.
Annie was just making the point that in either scenario, having those two programs together cuts down on travel across the district.
Right.
It's less, it doesn't cut it down completely, but it's, it's less than it would be.
And then my other special ed question is um in the closed Dyer option, it looked like um the self-contained special ed then. Wouldn't have old peers for the older children to participate. I know now children participate in specials courses with the general education classes. So in the Dyer closing model, it looked like the self-contained special ed students who are in grades, I don't know what it was, two, three, four.
So are, we, we.
Thank you.
Our self-contained programming.
Self-contained at the, we would have self-contained at the middle school and the high school.
I was thinking, yes, so the elementary self-contained students who are older in that model still only have young peers. Because in that scenario, the four K was there.
Correct.
Okay.
But we would still have that program that would exist at Carter where those students still continue to transition to the high school and then eventually to the pack house.
Right, so it would just be the upper elementary special ed students wouldn't necessarily have peers. I'm just, I'm making my own pro and con here, I'm sorry. Let's see. I just want to, I, I'm a details person, so I'm going to get into the budget and kids. It's our job. In the, I, I'm good on special ed services, thank you, Chris.
Good job, Chris.
And I building, building questions. And, and the curriculum questions, we know that we're going to be looking at new curriculum um through the potential of Act Twenty. And so is that a part of the budget cuts that included furniture and equipment or is that separate?
No, so we have a separate teaching and learning budget. So no, the, what Paige is talking about, we're actually um, the plan is at the, sorry, my eye is twitching. The plan is at the March uh board meeting is to have Kristin Dupree talk to you guys about Act Twenty and kind of update you about what that means. But what that refers to really is that DPI is mandating all school districts to utilize specific curriculum for English or ELA. Across the whole state, they've never done that before, where they've mandated specific programs to be able to be um used that are expected to be used. Which is, which is um interesting to see DPI doing that. The, the two programs that we have the choices between, um we actually vetted prior to DPI making this decision of the. They didn't come out with which ones to pick until January and we had already vetted them prior to that, which is pretty awesome. Our team landed on the, the ones DPI picked anyway before DPI even told us, um which is pretty cool. So that's going to be um fairly expensive to have to make that switch for our English. We do plan on making adjustments to our English curriculum all the way up through tenth grade. And it is required uh to make those adjustments. So what's unfortunate is uh DPI is, is making these mandates but not providing any dollars to the mandates. Yeah, go figure, right? Yeah, why would they help any of us in education? So that's kind of frustrating. The only, the only thing they are assisting with a little bit is some um grant funds to have some of your staff trained. Because there's also a requirement that all of your teachers that are four K through second grade are trained in a specific literacy training, which actually to me is a great idea. And we've already started on that um already with our team. So um they are providing some dollars for that professional development. But yeah, the, the adjustment to our ELA curriculum is something we're going to have to build into our budget.
Right, so that was already considered in the cuts that.
It's not in the cuts.
It's not in the cuts, but that's considered as in addition to the money that we know we need.
Yes.
Thank you. Um in one, in one of the, which one was it? So if we closed Dyer. The grade configuration at Carter.
Would be seven, would be seven uh four, seven, right here.
And so that would require playground equipment legally, fourth grade, fifth grade?
You don't legally need playground equipment, but yeah, you'd probably want, right? You would probably, yeah, that would be an expense for us for sure.
And I don't, forgive me for not knowing anything about playground construction. Is it possible to move equipment from Dyer to Carter if, as a cost-saving?
We probably wouldn't move um, if, you mean if we closed Dyer?
Yes, in the scenario where there's fifth, fourth and fifth at Carter because we closed Dyer.
Yes, I would say that we'd move it, yes. We probably won't move the um playground equipment that's at Lyons because the playground equipment at Lyons is fairly old right now. So it's all old, isn't it, Joel? Yeah, so we wouldn't move um the playground equipment, well, like Winkler, we just put in. It's older, it's fine, yes. It's fine, the playground equipment is fine, right? Okay, so Winkler, Waller and Dyer have new, and Cooper have newer playground equipment than Lyons.
So would there be a need for playground equipment at Carter in either scenario or only the closing of Dyer is my question?
Yeah, it's a good question. My prediction is that we would only probably need playground equipment at Carter if we went four, seven. I don't think we would necessarily need it with five, eight. Because students tend to want to uh play older student games, not necessarily monkey bars and things like that.
Okay.
Is that true, Nick, do you think that's?
As he's shaking his head.
You see sixth graders all the time, right? They're not clamoring for playground equipment?
Uh Annie just said too, or when she sees the fifth graders at Waller, they don't really go on the playground equipment, they're more throwing the footballs, soccer.
First slides, got it. And then, or another, this is, you know, budget question, you talked about, so this is in the closing Lyons scenario. You talked about all of four K then being at Dyer. As a person, as a family who was transitioned from Cooper to Dyer this past school year. I think one of the things that I brought up right away as a parent was the way that it looks. And you'd brought up the way that it looks as, you know, really being really important in the four K year and also the functionality, right? It's an old middle school. I can tell you that my kindergartner loves his locker, but uh when I, when I went to our open house. The, the staff had done a wonderful job of making things look wonderful in the classrooms, but. It was hard to open my kindergartner's rusty locker, you know, and so I'm wondering if there's room.
Well, I don't know if we haven't, you know, we're in a five million dollar deficit, but.
So I'm just, I was wondering if there's plans when you said the, you know, the condition is.
I actually was just talking to Buildings and Grounds today about that um and the desire to over time remove the lockers from Dyer if we were in that scenario. And wanted them to start to look into what they think the cost of that would be. Is that something we could do in-house, not in-house? And having them look into that, because I do think over time, if we were to go with the scenario of closing Lyons. Then I do think the removal of those lockers is important so that it's more elementary. Good question.
I'm just thinking about sooner and future costs of both scenarios. And I know that the costs are minor compared to, you know, one point two million dollars, but I'm a details person, so bear with me. Was the house model eliminated in both scenarios from the middle school?
Yes, the house model pretty much has to be eliminated in order for us to hit the five million.
That's what I thought, I just, I, I heard you definitely say it in the second scenario, so I just wanted to be sure. And you already answered my questions about driving versus busing. But then my, my other question is when we're making predictions at Lyons, and I know, Joel, you know the family is the best. And I know no one can predict the future, but we, we were talking about minutes and um, you know, mileage on people's cars versus they use the bus. But of course, there's other reasons people pick schools and going to school. So I'm wondering if there's been any talk um with parents and I know that we can, you know, no one wants their school closed. I, I understand that that's, it's a difficult thing for the community. But I'm just wondering if there's a sense beyond, hey, a few minutes saved here and there or the convenience of the bus? If there's any talk of, you know, the more outlying schools like Lyons, have we asked parents, is there a climate question or?
I don't know if asking parents isn't.
Are they, are they at BASD because they like BASD or do they just like Lyons or the convenience of busing? I guess is my question, because when we're talking about losing families, it's, of course, people don't mind driving five minutes.
I mean, the number one thing first and foremost that I think people have to not forget is that you, most people attend their resident school district. I mean, so where you choose to live, you tend to go to school where your community, you know, is. So I think that's number one, you know, that um the majority of our families that live in BASD attend BASD. I think that's number one. I think the, the other thing starts to become what makes the most sense for grade configuration, um functionality, efficiency of our staff. And it simply comes down to budget and what makes the most sense budget-wise. You know, when, when coming up with this model, I was going to say something else. I do think what's important to remember is that all of our students, no matter where you live, once you hit sixth grade right now, you're coming into town. You know what I mean? So um it's just kind of that prolonging um, you know, coming into the city or not coming into the city is that adjustment.
And you certainly don't have to sell me on BASD.
I hope not, we are the strongest district around, everybody.
Absolutely.
It's my opinion.
I'm just.
It's not an opinion, it's a fact.
I'm just looking at all the factors when, because that's something the community has asked us time and time again to consider is families enrolling out, right? And so when we're making that prediction, I just wanted a little more information than minutes. Okay, thanks, that's all my questions.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have some questions looking at like the deferring maintenance for capital projects and things like that. Obviously, in the short term, that may be what is necessary, but we're talking about having this five million dollar reduction go on long-term. So does that mean long-term deferment of these capital projects? And how are we going to prioritize what kind of maintenance comes along with that? Because I, there's needed maintenance already in many schools, there's needed upkeep and we want to make sure that we're keeping things.
Yes, so um two things going off of this. One, real quick, this is not, this is a bird walk for a hot second. Ruth and I looked at our ten-year capital improvement projects um to first see, when looking at which building do we close? Is there one that like, whoa, like sticks out of a lot of maintenance needs? And the answer to that is no, none of them have catastrophic needs of any kind. Nothing sticks out more than any of the other ones in relation to um huge maintenance costs in the next couple of years. The biggest things that are on, on the maintenance list in some ways is uh some adjustments to our gym floors and updating gym floors, things like that. Um are kind of bigger budget items. But really, it's uh, our team has in the last like six, last couple months. They met as a Buildings and Grounds team and already started looking at if, if they, if they took the ten-year capital improvement project plan. And said, okay, if we have almost no money to do stuff, right, if we have like two hundred thousand for projects, what would we say needs to be done first? And as a team, like kind of reorganize that and then reset out a plan in relation to that. So um I feel confident in our team's ability on what they've made adjustments to. It's just sometimes the, the things that um we also budget for. For example, Dyer had an issue this year with their boiler that we were not expecting. You know, so there's things like that that come up that we also have to take care of, but that's outside of the capital improvement projects. Could that answer that question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, anybody else, you got one?
Well, did you answer the question? So Aubrey, I think you asked too, like we have a quarter million dollars, right? For maintenance and reduction, I think that would be ongoing, but we'd have to look at, be able to look at our budget and say, can we bring that back up to five hundred thousand?
Right.
You raise a good point, we don't want to have that running out of continue.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, and over time, I think when we re-explore the need to um have another operational referendum eventually here, like then that's where we have a conversation again about. Needs as a dis, as a team and what do we feel like? Needs as a, as a team, and what do we feel like we need to build into that?
Because it's a good question, because we don't want to run a continual deficit, because then we end up with a situation where we have to go back for another capital referendum sooner than later, and that's no good, so. I should make sure, Aubrey, I didn't introduce you before, our new board members, our first meeting, so tough topic for your first meeting, but welcome to the board. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight, I mean, it's clear that you all care deeply about this district, and these aren't easy conversations to be had, but. We're just going to continue to do the best with a less than ideal situation and value input from staff, community members, and yeah, just really appreciate you all for being here.
Anybody else? Okay, then what we're going to do, we're, we're next moving into closed session, because we have to talk about personnel matters. But before anyone leaves, we, why don't we confer as a board on when our next meeting would be, because I think you might be interested in coming to that? Because again, we're going to have one which is just a listening session, and then the second, again, you'll have a chance for community input, and then we make that decision at the second meeting, because we got to be thoughtful, these are really hard decisions, and I want to make sure we have, all have time to digest and ask good questions. Can we just talk, because next week, do we have Monday through Thursday, is there a night, could anyone make Monday night?
Monday's the mayoral debate of community interest, that may be challenging for community members to.
True.
To participate.
How about Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday next week, and I think 6 o'clock is a nice time, because it doesn't get.
Wednesday's not good, because it's church, it's Lent.
Thursday would be, or Thursday or Friday would be the only days.
Thursday works for me.
Thursday works?
I can, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday.
Thursday works.
Thursday, Marlo, Taylor?
Thursday it is.
Were we trying to do two days?
We are, ideally, but if we can only do one, then we would have our decision made the following Monday at our regular board meeting, which wouldn't, would be okay too. Because that's only a few more days past this, I think there's some urgency, we want to make this decision as quickly as we can, because we appreciate there's on, this is difficult for our parents, staff, and students. But we don't want to rush it either, so that's where we're trying to make a good decision, so I'm hearing Thursday nights definitely, is there a night before that, we said Monday is out. Tuesday?
Tuesday's good, Tuesday's good.
It's okay.
Oh, you couldn't for Marlo, Tuesday?
For the second meeting?
For the first.
For the first.
Tuesday and Thursday next week.
I, I am good, except for Friday.
Well, the other thing too, if we can't make it, because no, I, I don't think I can make it Tuesday, we could, we could, these will all be livestreamed, and you and I could listen afterwards too, that's another option too. So, even if board members aren't here, we would, I would, you and I would listen to the comments, because again, the board's not going to interact, we're just taking in comments at this meeting, so. Why don't we do Tuesday and Thursday, does this sound like a plan? Okay.
What time?
6 o'clock for both, so. Certainly, yeah, yeah, thanks for asking, so next Tuesday, which is March 5th, 6 o'clock, meet here, this is a community input session, so community members have a chance to come. You have up to three minutes, like we do at any board meeting, to give a, a public comment, it's not meant to be a debate or anything, it's just a chance for us to listen to your input, we can offer short factual responses, but. We really want to hear from people, so any thoughts you have on the plan that we've talked about tonight? Then Thursday night, we would also have another special board meeting, that one would be more like we do at our regular board meetings, it'd be a chance for the board to have a further discussion, any other questions we may have, that result from tonight's meeting or the listening session. We'd also have a chance for other, you, other people can give community input at that point too, and then we would make a decision on what the, what the plan would be. So, on Thursday night, that would be March 7th, correct, and then we have our regular monthly meeting on March 11th. But then I'd start, start regular board business at that point, so. I didn't know that, so, yeah.
What time does the concert start?
Oh, it's sing-ration? You know, I should know that, my son's singing. You know, I'm going to say this then, I think we should skip Tuesday night, I don't think that's fair to the families that are, that's a huge concert, and. I, I think we should do this, I, I think because the musical runs four nights. No, here, hang on, I got it, we're going to have Thursday night be our listening session, let's change it to that, and that'll be at 6:00 PM. And then we're going to make the decision the following Monday at our regular board meeting.
And Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but if community members can submit a written message for the listening session too, if they can't attend, you can send your message in and it'll be read during, is that correct?
We don't typically read them, Aubrey, but we would definitely, we definitely read our emails, and we appreciate the emails, we want the input, so please send that, yeah, so don't feel like you have to come and, and speak at either meeting. So again, I want to make sure this is clear, Tuesday is off, Thursday at 6:00 PM, listening session only, and then Monday at our regular board meeting, which starts at 7:00 PM. We will have, and we'll move this up to the front of the agenda, so it'll be done right away.
And then because of that, we'll shift to Dyer, Dyer's supposed to be presenting that night, we'll shift that to a different month.
Yep. That sound good, everyone, all right? Yes, we always take public comments before making a decision, so that's something we've changed in the last couple of years, so anytime we make a board decision, we always off, allow people to give us their input.
I think it's important for people to understand too, like the desire, like tonight is more like a workshop for the board in the sense of. It's important for them to first be able to understand the recommendation and just take the information in as board members, then solicit input from the community, so that was, that's the intent. Is to ensure the board members all understand the desired plan, and then go to the community, and then the board has also not wanted to necessarily make a vote on the same night of taking input from the community, so.
Thanks everyone for coming tonight, so I'm going to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Okay, any comments, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, okay, thanks again, everyone for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, admin.
Admin, if you want to stay in closed session, you can, it's up to you.